Turbulent times, so it's good to see many folks coming out for their neighbors and assisting in the time of need. We're going to get started with the meeting. This meeting is now in session. The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings, public law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, having been transmitted to the Courier News on January 12th, 2021, as well as posting on the city's website. Herr, roll call.
Councilmembers Davis, absent during roll call, Council McKenna. Councilman McCray. Councilwoman Mills-Ransom. Can't hear you.
Present. I was muted. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Melch. Absent during roll call, Vice President Good.
Present.
Council President Hockaday.
Present.
We have five members present in the quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. But please read MC 2021-28 by title and further certify that it has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2021-28 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with SRV Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC, SRV Plainfield 2 Urban Renewal LLC respectfully granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties within the city of Plainfield. But our certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Courier News on August 21st, 2020.
Floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Like to speak, hit the hand icon. And if you're on the phone, star six.
Star nine.
Star nine. Alan Goldstein, name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. 939 Madison Avenue. I have a problem with this, a portion of this agreement, as well as a similar problem with the other pilot agreement later on, 2021-32. And that has to do with the amendment process. And in this one that we're dealing with at the moment, it's very vague. And it's paragraph 1510 towards the end. It says it can't be amended or changed without written consent of the parties thereto. Very vague. The other one, it says the mayor, municipal clerk, and such other city officers as necessary. Again, that's pretty vague as far as other city offices necessary. The problem is, is these are very long-term and complex agreements. And there's a documented history of unscrutulous behavior on the part of certain city officials over the years. I mean, we had one fourth time when 2PM UA commissioners were self-dealing and peddling an idea where they have the city hand over some underutilized property to housing authority, and then they would get the tax benefits by virtue of that. So they would get, and they would be handed the development rights to them. Also, we have a history of secretly amending long-term agreements. And in one instance, the other party was permitted to basically rip off the taxpayers of upwards of a couple of million dollars. And they paid themselves, you know, a package of illegal benefits. They lived the high life, and they fed a bevy of parasitic professional service providers. Now, the bottom line is, is that neither of these agreements, is there a place for the city council to weigh in? Now, who knows what is going to happen between now and 30, 35 years from now? I think the council needs to maintain its oversight, and all these agreements, if they're going to be amended, should be rewritten so that city council gets the opportunity to review and to approve of those amendments. And I think that, you know, you have to start thinking in the long term and not in the very short term, because things change. You know, some of us will probably be dead in 35 years. Anyhow, I think that you should table these two items, this one and the other one, and have them rewritten, include the city council, and then bring them back for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Goldstein. Next, the, which was John. I don't see your last name, but please state your name and address for the record. Floor is yours. John, the floor is yours. Please unmute yourself. Name and address for the record. Final call for Mr. John to, there you go. Oh, you unmuted yourself and muted yourself again. Okay, John seems to have technical difficulties. Whatever comments you had, you can certainly also present those during our general public comment. So I welcome you to call back and then. Any other callers who wish to, or Zoomers who wish to speak on this ordinance? CM Marie, please name an address for the record.
Yes, I, I'm sorry. I just joined. I do have a comment about an ordinance that's coming up. Should I wait for this time?
Yes, you can certainly chime in at that time. So we'll certainly give you an opportunity then. This is just.
Okay.
2021-28.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Public hearing is now closed on this ordinance. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers McKenna. McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
For favor want to pose ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage?
Thank you. We'll now move to public comments limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for this section. If you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon. You'll be unmuted. Name and address for the record as you all know how to do. Always bears repeating, sometimes we have new individuals. Each speaker will be given three minutes before the floor is now open. Okay. Once again, Mr. Goldstein.
Alan Goldstein, 939 Madison Avenue. I want to talk about Resolution 289-21 and the employment contract with Lurch Finstein-Higgins, being a financial consultant to the city. Now, a year and a half ago, I asked Mr. Garts at the budget hearings what legal basis he had for paying out 1.2 million dollars a year to PMUA. And he had obviously no clue. So he turned to his boss, then said, oh, this was all settled in court. By that time, I was muted and couldn't speak. And he was just lying about any kind of settlement in court. So without rehashing the details, which I think you're all familiar with, Lurch Finstein-Higgins was and remains a ringleader and engineer of municipal fraud involving the interlocal agreements, the payment of accounting, payment and accounting of solid waste, disposal costs, multi-year manipulation of misleading and false statements in PMUA's financial statements. Along with this administration, you're asking the same company that is handling PMUA's finances, that now handle the city's finances, knowing what their track record is and knowing what the conflicts of interest are? I think if this was a court of law and they were under oath, someone, for instance, like your business administrator, Ms. Levinson, would probably give a pretty accurate, bare bones description of what this fraud was and what the financial implications and informational implications would have been. On the other hand, if on that same stand and under oath, you spoke to the boy wonder who joined the city council in 1998, when all these problems began, I'm sure that he could give you a blow-by-blow detail, inch by inch, of exactly what went on beginning in 1998. I'm not asserting that he was a ringleader here, but I think he knows pretty clearly what's going on here. Now, I want to talk about some of the problems that we've had. And one of them is that there's no oversight. It's all the same people, basically. You got PMUA where he's got his sycophants sitting on the board. He's got a sister-in-law installed as the deputy director and CFO. He's installed, gotten himself installed on the local finance board, which is supposed to provide state oversight of authority budgets, municipal budgets. And you're asking the one and the same auditing company and accounting company to handle both the city and PMUA and set taxes and advise on the rates? Advise on the budget?
President's.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Further comments, there will be another section, general comments, when you can finish the remainder of your comments. Thank you. Also, just, just to, thank you, Ms. Ansari, for calling back. It is also appropriate time now for you to speak regarding remaining resolutions. So welcome back. Name and address for the record.
Yes, Marie and Sarah, Watchung Avenue, Plainfield. And actually, I'm sorry to follow Alan's comments, which certainly appear to be much more important and have a greater impact. But what I'm going to say is that it really has to do with the way this administration handles every ordinance, every decision. And what I'm referring to specifically is MC 2021-33. Okay, it seems minor. It seems silly, having to do with raising and keeping the chickens on a non-commercial basis. But once again, it's an ordinance that appears to be put through as a nature action without a lot of thought about where this could go, without a lot of definition about exactly what does non-commercial mean? Now, having said this, I have no vested interests whatsoever in chickens. However, if we're going to say non-commercial, are we then allowing people who are keeping chickens, for whatever reason, to become commercial? And what does commercial mean? Is it selling eggs? Is it slaughtering chickens on private property? And if chickens are being raised to be slaughtered, we turned down a slaughterhouse not long ago. And this is a health department issue that needs to come into play. So again, reading why it's going in, because people are complaining about roosters. There's a lot more to it if this ordinance goes through. I think it needs to be looked at. It needs to be dissected. You need to look at what other towns do. Some towns do permit a certain number of your chickens. Yes, they should be contained. Yes, they should be maintained.
Council President, the speaker's time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Ansari. Do you have anyone remaining to speak on these resolutions? Introduce this reading this evening on first reading.
Currently, there's no one with their hand raised.
Hearing and seeing none, I entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public hearing is now closed. I will move to the resolutions now. Are there any questions of resolutions 283-21-286-21? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions to be noted? Okay, those resolutions are approved. Mr. Clerk, would you please proceed with the reading of the remaining resolutions?
Resolution 287-21 authorizing claims resolution corporation and settling all claims of the matter of Anna Holman versus Lady of Plainfield.
Any questions from my council colleagues regarding this resolution? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Okay, the resolution is approved.
Resolution 288-21 authorizing the contract to Hatfield and Schwartz Loeb.
Okay, let's have questions from council members regarding this resolution. Hearing and seeing none, may we have a motion in a second?
Move.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk. Can we have a reading of the roll call?
Councilmembers McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Good.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Animents, resolutions adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Resolution 2921, resolution 289 awarding a contract to Lurch Finstein-Higgins.
Questions from council member colleagues.
Councilful President?
Yes, Councilman McKenna.
So, you know, I want to say that I'm uncomfortable with the selection of this firm and to kind of, I guess, jump on a little bit of what Mr. Goldstein said in his public comments, the fact that they're the auditor for for the PMUA is an issue for me. I think, you know, it's good to have some outside voices that are not conflicted by other positions that they are contracted for within the city. I think that having one of their representatives serve, though, is problematic, especially because they're going to audit that individual's work essentially. And I think that's highly problematic for me. I do want to ask, though, specifically, a question is, in here, we're using American Rescue Plan funds, which are the federal funds related to COVID. And I'm wondering why it is we're using those funds and how that falls under the intent of the legislation.
I can answer all of those comments. First of all, you should know that we went out for RFQ for this item, and this was the only firm that responded and that stated they would be on site at least two days a week, which is what we need. We need a firm who will be on site. The second comment related to they're not our auditor. They're the PMUA's auditor, but they're not our auditors. They won't be doing our auditing work. And the third, your question about ARPA, they will be doing our CFO work, and that will be $150,000. Then there's a separate $50,000 that they will get paid to do our reconciliation of the 23 and change million dollars that we're doing. It's a very burdensome process to keep track and reconcile all the funds that the federal government is going to audit and make sure that we're spending appropriately. So they will be doing that work for us at the cost of $50,000. And the ARPA Rescue Plan Act does allow for a portion of money to be set aside from the federal funds for an accountant to reconcile the claims.
So that particular expenditure is specifically related to American Rescue Plan expenditure?
That's it. That 50,000 is just to focus on how we're spending this 23 million and keeping track of everything that we're going to need for the audit process, reconciling those funds, et cetera.
Is that a one-time period? That's a one-time project-driven fee?
Yeah, that's only related to the American Rescue Plan funds.
As long as.
We have the funds for two years.
So as long.
This contract is just for one year.
But as, wait, say that last part again.
The funds, we are getting the funds for two years. But this, we're only entering into an agreement with them for one year.
So in order to audit any additional funds after the one-year period, there would have to be another expenditure?
Well, we'll see. We'll see. Maybe we're, I mean, there's a million different paths we could take.
Okay.
But this is just this year, for this contract period.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
You have additional questions from council members? I'd like our counsel, Mr. Mencello, to just address any perceived or appearances of conflict issues that were raised by individuals. Just, what are your thoughts regarding?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. There's no conflict with someone performing financial services for the city and then acting as an auditor for the PMUA. In fact, there wouldn't be a problem if they were the auditor for both the city and the PMUA. They're both separate legal entities, so there is no conflict. If a conflict, a specific conflict arose between the two entities, they may have to recuse themselves, but that would be on a case-by-case basis. There's no per se violation that they represent both entities.
Thank you.
Well.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Move.
Second.
Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Councilmembers McKenna.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills-Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Good. Can't hear you, Vice President Good. Vice President Good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
For favor want to pose, resolution has been adopted. Resolution 290-21 authorizing approval to end the calendar year 2021 municipal budget.
Any questions from council member colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in, any opposition or abstentions? None, resolution approved.
Resolution 291, utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Any questions from council member colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Hearing and seeing none, the resolution is approved.
Resolution 292-21 authorizing approval to cancel taxes due to a pilot.
Any questions from council member colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Hearing and seeing none, the resolution is approved.
Resolution 293-21 requesting the planning board to reexamine the city's master plan with respect to recently enacted cannabis regulations.
Do you have questions from council members? Scan the screen. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Moved.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Hearing and seeing none, resolution is approved.
Resolution 294-21 designating AutoZone Northeast LLC as redevelopment for the redevelopment of certain properties in the city of Plainfield.
Do you have questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? The resolution is approved.
Resolution 295-21 designating Golden Circle Properties LLC for the redevelopment of certain properties.
Any questions from council member colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Hearing and seeing none, rep is approved.
296, authorizing the application and acceptance of Union County Greening of Union County 2021 matching grant.
Scanning the screen for questions from council members. Hearing and seeing none, motion in a second will be appropriate.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions to be noted? Resolution is approved.
Resolution 297-21 authorizing professional service contract to non-associates.
Do we have questions from council members?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure, councilman.
One, how did the list get created, especially after years and years and years of the city having a policy, multiple administrations, by the way, having a policy of speed humps not being preferred due to emergency vehicles having to slow down, et cetera? And in creating that list, I'm noticing that South End Parkway is not on there, and that's a huge area for complaints of people speeding down from woodland towards Park. And then my last question is, what is the signage going to be related to the installation of these? speed humps? And is there any way we can avoid sign litter by having 45 signs that say "speed hump approaching," "speed hump right in front of you," "you just passed a speed hump," "speed hump?" Because it's, you know, we've got to add signs but not remove them, and those those just add litter to the to the area. And if they're not needed, we shouldn't put them up.
And those are three great questions. And just the first question itself, towards the speed humps, myself and members of the, yeah, by department and police looked over different areas of town to see what we should consider, consider putting speed humps. And that's why the traffic study itself is going to be done, so we can see how that works. And as far as the signage, the signage is going to be the way it should be. We want to stay within the standards DOT, et cetera, to make sure we do it right and follow certain guidelines, letting folks know that approaching, that is, no, speed hump is approach. Approaching, so the signage has to be in certain ways to to make sure that happens from a safety standpoint. So we're going to reexamine everything to see where we're going to place any speed humps throughout the city. Yeah, there's some location looked at that were considered for speed humps, and that's the list that you have in front of you. That could, that subject could change. That may change based on our analysis and how we reassess everything.
Okay.
Make sure things are right.
South End Parkway, a possibility for those speed humps?
Yeah, that's one of many that's considered, can be considered.
Okay. And by the way, just a quick one, because you you brought up the DOT requirements, the the humps have, do the humps have to be striped or outlined in some way?
Well, yeah, but just the color yellow, what you can see them at night, whatever they're approaching, a bright color.
Across the, across or around the actual speed humps themselves?
Yes, everything, the color itself, yes.
And as a side note, I think the the speed humps that currently exist on Kensington probably need a, an update on those stripes.
Okay, that's something we look at, because we're going to reevaluate everything as we go through and check everything out, councilman.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Do we have additional questions from council members? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion and a second.
Move.
Move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution 29821, authorizing approval to utilize the Morse Co-op for concrete replacement for the 2021 roadway improvements.
Do we have questions from council members regarding this resolution? Seeing none, do we have a motion and a second?
Move.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution 29921, authorizing approval for a change of scope to utilize the Morse County Co-op for the 2021 Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grant Roadway Improvement Project.
Do we have questions from council member colleagues? Do we have a motion and a second?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution 321, authorizing the purchase of an aerial lift tree truck.
Questions from council members? Motion and second.
Move. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions to be noted? Resolution approved.
Resolution 30121, authorizing approval to issue lean placements for property cleanup.
Any questions from council members? Motion and second?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution 30221, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract between the city of Plainfield and North Jersey aid lines.
Any questions from council members? Motion and second?
No. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution 30321, authorizing approval to apply and accept New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Division of Housing and Community Resources Community Service Block Grant.
Do we have questions from council members? Motion and second please?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved.
Resolution 30421, authorizing approval to apply and accept the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Division of Housing and Community Resources Community Service Block Grant.
Any questions from council members regarding this resolution? A motion and a second?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions to be noted? Resolution approved.
Resolution 30521, authorizing approval to enter into a shared services agreement with the county of Union for housing and urban development fiscal year 47.
Do we have questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Resolution approved. We now come to ordinances on first reading. Clerk, please read MC 2021 dash 29 by title.
MC 202129, a capital ordinance appropriating a $2 million grant received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, an available capital improvement fund to pay for that implementation of a statewide broadband infrastructure project in and by the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, state of New Jersey.
Do we have questions from council members? Can I entertain a motion in a second?
Move.
Would you get that clerk? Motion in a second.
Council President, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I heard it was at the same time, so I just-
Okay.
Want to make sure the clerk knows-
Because I know I was going in and out a little bit.
That's fine. Did you note the motion in a second, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, yes, Council President.
Okay. Can we have a roll call?
I don't think you made, was there a motion in a second for the for the ordinance? Thought that was the... Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
This ordinance has been introduced on first reading. Ordinance 2021-30 is an ordinance to amend Article 17, colon, 13, dash, one of the Plainfield Land Use Ordinance Concern Board and Commission-related application fees.
Do we have questions from council members regarding MC 2021-30? Okay, hearing now, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Moved.
Second.
The second clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Unanimous, this ordinance has been introduced on first reading. MC 2021-31 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 17, land use ordinance of the city of Plainfield by adding Section 17, colon, nine, dash, 30, food vehicles.
Are there any questions from council members regarding MC 2021-31?
Yes, Council President, I I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
You know, reading through these, the the regulations, I I think it's, they're rather onerous. And I think, in essence, they discourage participation in food truck. So my my food truck licenses and in, my question is, what what's the reason behind this and and why the why the need to do this to go above and beyond our our typical food truck licensing policy?
I don't know that we have a current food truck licensing policy. We are getting more food trucks within the city of Plainfield that want to operate. They've been operating essentially on private property. And so this will allow them some public space in which to operate Monday through Sunday with hours of operations. So again, this food truck ordinance is meant to encourage food trucks. And again, we don't have anything that really governs food trucks today. We try to really narrow it down in terms of scope. There are various departments involved in the licensing of food trucks. So, you know, it's zoning, it is the health department, it's the fire department, it's the police for background checks, et cetera. So we tried to simplify it as much as we could. It has been reviewed with various departments, and so this will allow for food trucks. In addition, it doesn't prevent us from having special events that allow for food trucks. It doesn't prevent, it allows a resident who has a party, who wants to have a food truck at that particular event, it allows for those kinds of things.
And 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 where, how is it going to affect individuals who have a non-moving, I guess, is that the term, or sterey food truck currently on private property?
We are, it it does not affect any private property agreements. That is something between the property owner and the food truck, as long as it remains on their private property and doesn't interfere with the operation of anything. In terms of food trucks, for the most part, are defined in here as mobile vehicles. So we're hoping that this would encourage food trucks in certain areas of town.
So those that, so those that are on private property now regularly, permanently or or regularly, would not fall under this ordinance?
No, they would not fall under this ordinance.
Additional questions from council members?
I just have a comment regarding it. I mean, it, the community has shown great support for food trucks. And as a matter of fact, there was recently a food truck festival that this, that the city put on, which was very well attended. And I think that it's certainly appropriate for those types of business owners to submit their presence in Plainfield, bringing us additional food options. Of course, not everyone would be happy with food trucks, especially restaurants who might be already situated, who feel like it may infringe on their revenues. But in my view, it's 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 really time that we all step up in Plainfield. And, you know, if an offering is good, then that's, you know, to me, that's that's fair competition. And, you know, we want really premium options for our city. And I think food trucks, a lot of our residents have determined that to be an option of choice many times. So we want, need to make sure we're cultivating that area of our business owners as well. So I'm I'm in support of this ordinance and certainly welcome those entrepreneurs to our city on a more permanent basis, so we can, you know, have enhanced options for our city. So thank you for this. I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Moved.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilman McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
For in favor, want to oppose, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading. MC 2021-32 is an ordinance to the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, authorizing the amendment, redevelopment agreement and financial agreement with TODD West Urban Renewal LLC with respect to certain properties identified as Block 245, Lot 1, Lots 247, Lots 1, 2.07, and a portion of 8 and 9 through 11 on the official tax map of the city to reflect updated project description approved by the city's planning board.
Do we have questions from council members? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
For in favor, want to oppose, ordinance has been introduced on first reading. Ordinance MC 2021-33 is an ordinance prohibiting the raising and keeping of chickens on a non-commercial basis.
Any questions from council members?
Council President, no, no question, but but a comment. And that I I think particularly in in favor of this, I don't really see this, some giant issue with with people having chickens. I do see an issue with them having roosters. I've had constituents who have, who have had concerns with with some of their neighbors who have had years, they did not have an issue with chickens, just the roosters for obvious reasons. I I just don't see the, see the need for this particular ordinance.
The council president, may I comment?
You may.
First of all, chickens are not currently not permitted in our zoning or off ordinance. This is to clarify it for the public, this particular ordinance. So if something is not expressly permitted, it is then not permitted. So chickens in single-family homes, residential property currently is not allowed by our ordinance. What this proposes to do is clarify that in terms of our zoning ordinance, because there have been a number of complaints from the public as well as council persons related to this issue.
I I think that that's a question that I have then. If they're not allowed, and this is just to clarify, we can do that with a banner across the street, putting it in the newsletter, flyers, finding people. We can do that that way instead of adding more lingo to the municipal ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions from our council members? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
President Hockaday?
Yes.
For in favor, want to oppose, ordinance has been introduced on first reading. MC 2021-34, is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16, vehicles of traffic, Article 7, through streets, stop intersections, stop and yield intersections, designating certain four-way stop intersections.
Any questions from council members? I'll now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So move, Council President.
Councilwoman, for a second. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills-Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Good?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Five in favor? Unanimous, this has been introduced on first reading.
Thank you. A total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. If yours to be heard at the hand icon, you'll be muted, you have your name and address for the record. The floor is now open. Welcome back, Ms. Ansari. Name and address for the record. For yours.
For yours. Ms. Ansari, please unmute yourself if you wish to speak.
Okay, got it. Marie and Sari, what chance have you? Very disappointed that no one returned a call or any email or communication to me following my request at the last meeting. This once again has to do with the deer kill that I suspect you all are planning to put through without discussion, without consideration of all of the data that has been provided to you. And if you're not aware that the lack of responsiveness, transparency, and seeming lies to constituents are, are echoing loud and clear, and people are becoming more aware of it. We demand honesty and integrity. And there is no reason, none whatsoever, to allow sports hunters to continue to come in to the remaining green space we have. It's been a terrible, almost two years. People are now dealing with aftermath of flooding, which will be followed by moles. And the green space is the last refuge for many people in Plainfield. Sports hunters are not doing the public any good whatsoever. They will feed you the soundbites, but the whole reason for killing with crossbow is to provide sport space. And they are thrilled that they got Plainfield. I, I challenge anyone to come up with the actual data on how complaints have been reduced through this blood sport. However, complaints can be reduced through humane mitigation, which we keep offering you, and you keep turning your back on it. But more and more, it's coming across as it's all politics and no integrity. That's what I'll say for now. Mr. Brown, you were assigned two years ago to deal with this with us. Everyone was thrilled. Mr. Hockaday was thrilled. But then you dropped the ball. Nothing happened despite our attempts to do it. We have a whole program ready to go. No more killing because someone's tulips are being eaten. And Mr. Mincello, I don't know why the smile, but you're the one who looked me right in the eyes and said, "Mr. Matt absolutely does not want killing." Well, surprise, something changed. I wonder what. That's it. We're open. You can show the public that you actually will consider being reasonable and stop doing what you think politics is all about. Thank you.
For your comments. Ms. Cooper, name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
There we are. Hey, good evening. Sam Sakita Cooper here, Plainfield Business Owner. I want to ask if there is a way to partner, either with the school system or if it is something that the city is responsible for. I'm not sure who wears the hat, but with school resuming, with people, some of us going back to work, using our vehicles again, specifically the corner of Myrtle and Rock Avenue now has the, resumed the original traffic pattern. I had asked before if we could please place some signage on the ground where it would say school ahead at least, or you know, some type of striping. There's nothing there. That, of course, was, from me watching the little children, there are still people that don't know that there is an elementary school right at that light. So you have six-year-olds that are crossing at Rock and Myrtle. So we still have no police presence. Now we don't have a four-way stop. If we could please perhaps look into some striping that at least lets the traffic know to slow down that there is a school ahead. I know that there is not an exorbitant amount of money to do that since the council said that when we did the Black Lives Matter on certain corners, that it was not a huge undertaking on the budget. So perhaps we can look into that at that location at a minimum, and there may be others in town that may need that as well. I know that there is striping, I believe, that is going to come to the East Second Street four-way stop. Trying to make sure it's at East Second. Yes, that's East Second Street. We have that four-way stop now, and perhaps instead of, I know at some point that mobile vehicle is going to go away if it is not already gone. But could we perhaps also get striping for those four-way stops to say that there is a stop sign ahead, since that again is a new traffic pattern? And then we don't have to worry about having, you know, the large vehicles that are there. Just a suggestion in hopes that that would help people to slow down and alert them to what has now become the new norm. I saw in the buzz, as maybe one of you may have seen, that there was some concern about a police officer not, or a crossing guard not being at the Plainfield Avenue and West Third and possibly West Fourth. I'm not sure which schools this person was referring to, but they were complaining about, I guess, being able to cross that, you know, I don't know if it's for Washington School, if it's for the neighborhood house, I'm not sure. I'm just putting it out there to you, again, since school has just resumed that, you know, maybe if someone could just drive around and observe to see how things are going. We don't want any tragedies of any kind, whether it's children or adults. So if someone could look in. Excuse me? Okay. So the only other thing that I wanted to speak about was...
The speaker's time is up.
Oh, okay. That's what you said. Okay. That went fast. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hate when it happens sometimes. Your contributions are always welcome and valuable. Ms. Cooper. Spiteful, running out of time. Ms. Popper, name and address for the record.
Thank you, Council President. It's Jennifer Popper. I live on Dixie Lane, and I just had a quick question, more of a clarification, if you will, for MC 2021-33 with the chickens. Since it only says chickens and Mr. McKenna raised the issue of roosters, is chickens all encompassing, including roosters, or just chickens and roosters are still allowed? May I, Council President?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Once we close public comment, I would like you to address that question.
That was my only question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will get to that.
Okay.
All right. And my council colleagues will not let me forget. Mr. Goldstein, name and address for the record.
Yes, hello again. Alan Goldstein, 939 Madison Avenue. I have to say, as a group, you're, this is a pathetic embarrassment I'm looking at you. You're the least inquisitive people I've ever seen. You ask no questions about very complex issues. You sit there, you don't even ask questions about the less complex. You make statements now and again and vote yes, if that's the way the political powers expect that you should. The problem is, is that you're working for the political industrial complex. The political industrial complex. Talking about the lawyers, David Mincello's and his current partners and his former law partners. I'm talking about the Lurch, Vincent Higgins. I'm talking about the McManamans and Scottlands. I'm talking about the Dakotas's, and, and the list goes on. You know, even as representatives of a constituent who's brought up legitimate issues to no effect, apparently, except for the obvious corruption that's on display here in the conflicts of interest that despite what Mr. Mincello said, exists far and wide. And it would be interesting to see all these players, you know, and how many of them overlap with him at varying other entities all around Union County and elsewhere in this state. But I, I have three direct representatives on this city council. And none of them are helpful in getting any answers or even setting my mind at ease that what I've been saying isn't actually what's happening. And I've made a lot of accusations, obviously. Nobody's coming after me to shut me up or sue me, tell me I'm wrong. And they can't because I'm right. And it's been the same machine, the McManamans, the Scottlands again, and those that create PMUA and, you know, other conflicts along the way. And the second point is, these meetings are outrageous. You put out an agenda at 6:30, you know, on a Friday night, and you take action. Two days later, over the course of the weekend, there's no opportunity for it to be digested by the public. I think you need to have an agenda out similar to what you had previously a week ahead of time, even if you're not going to have a separate agenda setting session. You know, I don't think you're interested at all in the residents of the city. You're making baubles, you know, you're creating little bread and circuses and little monuments here and there, but the basic core is rotten. That's basically what I have to say. I want to thank you for your time, and I hope that you change your ways.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Certainly welcome all feedback. You have anyone else?
There is currently no one with their hand raised.
I'll entertain a motion of closed public comment.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, opposition or abstentions. Public comment is now closed.
Council President?
Yes.
Two things. First, I wanted to ask the police director, acting police director, is there still a study going on for Rock and Myrtle? I believe it is. This is still currently, I think they're monitoring it closely, aren't they?
You are, sir, and I'm going to look into the guard and work with Mr., with Director Dabney, see if we can get some, some better visibility at the intersection.
Okay. Thank you. Secondly, I don't believe I was ever told that I wasn't inquisitive. I'm probably one of the most inquisitive people that I know, persons that I know. And for those that are listening, for the record, I think we all care about our constituency. We all love this city. If I didn't love this city, I wouldn't be here. I wasn't always a council person, but I am, and I have the best interest of Plainfield at heart. To say that we are a disgrace, he's entitled to his opinion, however wrong. But questions are asked, many, many questions. I know personally I ask questions when we put our agenda together. Lots of questions, endless questions. I get the answers to my questions. I don't see a need to ask those same questions when we have our meetings, unless I ask that particular director to please, for the public, can you please break it down and explain this particular resolution? So that they'll understand it. I may know, but break it down for them. So I believe that that statement is, is, couldn't be even more, no more false than, than it is. I mean, it is totally false. So I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Mr. President. Okay, I'd just like to say for the public that the council has a process. We have subcommittees, and these subcommittees meet with the directors, those that are functioning. Each one of us chair one of the subcommittees. Now, whether we decide not to meet is really meaning that the council member has not taken their responsibility very seriously. The subcommittee that I chair did not miss a beat at all during COVID or whatever. We met monthly, and we meet to deal with asking questions that we feel are necessary, that we think that maybe our colleagues will ask. There are points when we say to the director or ask them, I should say, if they would bring a speaker in or would they have a presentation or whatever, if we thought clarity is due. I am, as council vice president is, I do not try to defend myself against people's opinions. Those are theirs, but I think the public needs to know that besides the subcommittee that should be working, then before something hits the agenda, the vice president and the president also sits with the administration and asks questions, and that does not keep any member of the council from asking more questions when we meet. But some of us know that they sometimes already have the answers that we have, or we have a lot of stuff in the background. And when people do not necessarily get what they want when they stand before us, they need to understand that we represent a whole city. We do not represent a faction of the city, and we will continue to try to do our best for all of the constituents of Plainfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council President. Sure. I'd just like to add that the public needs to keep in mind that each and every council person here is a taxpayer, and we represent our own interests as well as the interests of all our constituents. One should never try to say because we don't get up here and put on a show for people that we are not concerned or we are not engaged in the process of making sure that every decision that is made is for the betterment of the community and the constituents involved.
Okay. Everyone spoke. I'll move to Director Jackson. You wanted to follow up on a question that we had.
Yes, the definition of chickens for Jen Popper does include roosters. So we're talking about the whole species.
So again, it does include roosters. I do want to make one clarification about pilots. Pilots are a financial agreement between an entity and the city. Any changes to, I don't know about past or any past accusations, but I do know that any changes to those financial agreements have to come to council. So hence why you saw TODD West on your agenda. That particular one was amending the project scope as well as extending the timeframes for project completion. So again, when there are changes to these agreements, we have to bring it before council. And I wanted to clarify that. We bring a lot of things before council related to financial agreements, trans, assignment and assumption. So if there's a new entity that they want to transfer the agreement to, we bring that to council. So again, these agreements can only be amended by this legislative body. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer, Director. Okay. I, I guess my only question regarding, I mean, I know that, I don't know if it's, the, the larger category is chicken or poultry on or whatever, but perhaps we could address that and clarify to, it's all encompassing. I'm sure that there's a word or title for that, that.
As the, as the only Iowa boy here, it's, chickens include hens and roosters. The females that lay eggs are hens and the males are roosters. So chickens are chickens.
But could be foul, council president.
So with that said, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or extensions? Okay, thank you all. The meeting is now adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.